A particularly warm welcome to our two members of the public, to Ken and to Graham. Thanks very much for your attendance and thanks very much for your contributions to the meeting. So we're here to discuss the proposed traffic calming measures in road humps at Lyle Road and Newton Street, Genock. But before we do that, I mean, we'd just like to go around the houses here and introduce ourselves. I'm going to start the ball with Michael McCormick, I'm the Chair of the Environment and Regeneration Committee. I'm thinking to go to my right, Diane, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Diane, sorry, I'm Diane Swinney, Committee Officer in the Clyde Council.
Thank you.
Rona McGee, Committee Officer in the Clyde Council.
Peter McDonald, Legal and Property Services.
Jim Kerr, Solicitor, Legal and Property Services.
Who's next?
Gordon Leach, Roads and Transportation.
Councillor Jim McElhenney, I'll put in.
Convene, I think we've probably all got our different faces in different places on the screens. So if it's okay with yourself, I'll just, I'll work around the list and prompt everyone.
That would be a good idea. See, here's me thinking that everybody did the same screen I've got. So that's something that I've found, I've just have to find out to my course. So Peter, if you could maybe go through the folk that have not introduced themselves, that would be helpful.
Every day is a school day. Councillor Curley. Councillor, I think you're on mute there.
There we go, that's what school days are. Hello, my name's Chris Curley, Councillor Ward One.
Councillor Crowder.
Good afternoon, Councillor John Crowder, Councillor for Ward Seven.
Councillor Robertson.
I'm Councillor Elizabeth Robertson, I'm one of the Ward Councillors for Ward Four. And I'm actually just observing the meeting, I'm not a member of this committee, so I'm here in an observational capacity.
Councillor Clocerty.
Aye, Councillor Jim Clocerty, one of the local Ward members of Ward Four.
Councillor McElhenney, I think, I think you've already piped up, have I? And Councillor McCormick, obviously. Councillor McCabe.
Councillor Stephen McCabe, I'm Ward Member for Ward One.
Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, Councillor Jackson for Ward Three.
And do we have another call in? User here, what comes?
This is Councillor Neilson here, I'm in the office, I cannot get Webex to work, so I've called in.
Excellent, okay.
Thanks.
I'll just ask them to update the user there. And obviously, if I can, if we can ask, well, thank our members of the public for participating today, and if I can ask you to introduce yourselves as well, that's Mr MacArthur.
Hi, I'm Ken MacArthur, I'm resident at 115 Newton Street.
I'm Mr Kirkwood.
Graham Kirkwood, resident at 121 Newton Street.
Okay, everyone, thanks very much, that brought a wee bit longer than I thought it was going to take. But thanks, thanks for kind of being with us. So I'm going to ask our legal officer, Peter McDonald, to maybe go through the procedure for this kind of public hearing, and then we'll get the ball moving. So Peter, if you could maybe just explain the kind of format of the meeting and who's going to take with us?
So there's a set of rules of procedure in Appendix One to the report to this committee, which we'll be asking the members to approve, just as a first item of business at the meeting. These have been designed to create the right atmosphere for discussion, to eliminate or reduce formalities, and to give everyone a fair hearing. Everybody present has introduced themselves, including the members of the Committee Officers and the members of the public present. The hearing will take the form of a discussion led by the Convene, who is also referred to as the Chair at this meeting. The parties who are intended to be heard at the hearing are the council, as the roads authority, and proposer of the proposed measures, and the objectors. A report has been circulated to the members in advance of the meeting and published on the council website. Appendix Two has the text of the objections received and subsequent correspondence between the council officers and the objectors on the matter. Appendix Three also, was it Appendix Four, has the statement of case by roads officers, and Appendix Five has other representations made by Mr MacArthur. The hearing will proceed as follows. The roads officer, in this case Gordon Leach and Elaine Provan, will be invited to describe and present the case for the order sent to the scene for discussion. As part of this, the roads officers may address points arising from the written objections and subsequent correspondence. It will be allowed a maximum of five minutes per each objection received. Then, any objectors present wishing to participate in the discussion will be invited to speak to the committee. They will speak in turn in the order they appear in the appendix, namely firstly, Mr MacArthur, and secondly, Mr Kirkwood, in each case for a maximum of five minutes. If each objector has spoken, the roads officer will then be invited to make further representations to answer any matter or matters arising raised by the objectors, but that without introducing any new material. This will be limited to a maximum period of five minutes. Objectors will then be invited to make further representations, again without introducing any new material, to allow him or her to answer any matter raised by the roads officer and to summarize the permission. Again, this will be limited in each case to a maximum period of five minutes. The members of the committee will then be invited to ask questions of both the roads officer and the objector. The role of the members here is only to hear, consider, and to make a decision on the evidence given by the roads officer and the objector. Once the process has been completed for each objection, the members of the committee will adjourn to consider their decision. The decision will be intimated to the roads officer and the objectors orally, and any votes will be held in public. It's anticipated this will happen today, but if that is not possible for any reason, then the hearing will be reconvened. If the committee upholds one or more of the objections in whole or in part, the matter may be remitted to roads to modify the proposal, following any statutory requirements, and to report to a future meeting of the Environment and Regeneration Committee. And if I can just draw the committee's attention to one point at paragraph 6.2, there's just a highlight typing error which we'd like to min it. That makes reference to there being two objections received and maintained, when in fact, three objections received and maintained, as is detailed in the body of the report and in the appendices. And the two of those objectors are obviously present today. And then, if I could invite the committee to consider the approval of the rules of procedure.
Yeah, okay, kind of an agreement to the rules of procedure, yeah. Okay, thanks very much for that. Peter, can I bring in my roads officers to put forward the case for the works? Is it Gordon or is it Elaine that's going to speak on this?
No, it's myself, Councillor McCormick, it's Gordon that will talk.
Gordon, Gordon Leach, okay Gordon, four years.
Sorry, Convene, can I just interrupt briefly, I've managed to get out of sync already. Can we deal with apology substitutions, declarations of interest as well, please?
Yeah, certainly.
There are no apologies for absence, and could I just ask if there are any declarations of interest?
No.
None, okay, thank you.
Okay, okay Gordon.
Okay, in 2018, a traffic calming scheme was developed for Lyle Road as it was top of the traffic calming priority list. This scheme extended to just uphill of Altona Craig, and the speed of the vehicles in Lyle Road is over 40 miles per hour. A consultation was held on this between November 2018 and January 2019, and there were two objections, with another objection, another late objection received that couldn't be taken forward. At a special meeting of the Environment and Regeneration Committee, held on Tuesday the 16th of April, the committee upheld the objections and instructed the scheme to be extended down Newton Street to Madeira Street. The scheme here today extends down Newton Street to Madeira Street and includes Lyle Road. The council consider the benefits will be achieved in road safety by the terms of reducing the speed on the, the speed of traffic on parts of Lyle Road and Newton Street, which will have a positive impact further along the roads as well. This newly proposed scheme includes Lyle Road and Newton Street and was taken to public consultation between October 19 and November 19, and there are currently three maintained objections. Some of the common themes of the objections are, one of the residences resided there for over 20 years and has only seen one accident. In the last three years, there's been four accidents in Lyle Road and three accidents in Newton Street. Are the proposals put in place to reduce the noise? No, they're not, they're not put in place to reduce any noise. The Department of Transport produced a leaflet that says the presence of speed cushions results in a substantial drop in traffic noise levels. The build-outs will remove parking spaces. The build-outs are only put round traffic junctions to improve the visibility of the traffic coming out onto Newton Street and Lyle Road, and they're also there to reduce the road width, which has an added impact of reducing, reducing speed. Difficult to reversing into driveways, the speed in the roads will be lower, so this will help that manoeuvre. Speeding in tight side lane, the measures are across all lanes, so it will affect all lanes. Sorry, is Peter wanting to come in, sorry?
Yeah, Peter, do you want to come in there? You're on mute, Peter.
Yeah, try that, there we go. Just to say that that's, Councillor Mackenzie has just joined us. Councillor, at what point did you come in? Did you hear everything that Mr Leach had said there, or did you come in after Mr Leach had started? Oh, Councillor, sorry, I'm afraid you're on mute once again.
Yeah, just stopped it.
So, Councillor, okay, are you, are you content that you will have heard everything on this matter then? On this particular item? So obviously, you're not participating in the first decision, you could still participate in this. Second item of business, okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, Gordon.
Right, Gordon, so not necessary to park painting bays. The painting bays are deserved, are painted to give a delineation at the edge of the road, again to narrow the road width, to make it feel as if, as if it's narrow, or to reduce speeds. Money would be best spent installing a speed camera. Now, it's not, it's not in the Clyde Council that installs speed cameras, it's Police Scotland. And they've announced that they will put in a mobile camera in this, in this location. But if these, but remembering that's a mobile camera, and it's only there part of the time, if we put these measures in, then that camera will not be required. The scheme will also address an improved road safety of the visibility of Golf Place, and it will formalise the parking round Altona Craig, which we know is an issue. Lyle Hill is a dedicated walking route to Clyde View Academy, which speeds over 40 miles an hour and four accidents, you can see why that was top of the list. Finally, any changes that will require to this scheme will require a further public consultation. And as I mentioned in my opening statement, this has been going on since 2019, and by prolonging this scheme again, it's preventing other traffic calming schemes being progressed to the budget allocation. And it may, it may come a time when this scheme is not top of the list again, and it might not be taken forward if we keep prolonging it. And that's all I have to say at this time, thank you Chair.
Okay, great, Gordon, thanks very much for the, okay, so Ken and Graham, is it Ken that wants to speak first? Yeah? Okay, Ken, you're on mute, that's right.
As we, first of all, thank you so much for this opportunity to address you all this afternoon, it is appreciated. And I must also thank the members of the council and different departments for the information that I've asked for, and the quick response and very professional response that I've had in all cases, and I do appreciate that. I've, just to ask a couple of questions of, may I address Mr Leach at the moment, ask a question? Or is that something I should leave to later?
No, I think, I think if you leave that to later, Ken, if you can just, if you can just speak and then we'll get, we'll get McCormick come back in at the end after both you and Graham have spoke.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you so much. Basically, I'm objecting to the traffic calming measures on, between Madeira Street and the Lyle Hill, as it were. And I think if you actually look at your own scoring sheets for this, and the Newton Street to Greve Road scored 40.3, and I understand that you're looking at one vehicle, but I would like that clarified as well. As far as I can determine from your own charts, there was only one vehicle that was travelling at 40 miles per hour, and 20 points were attributed to that, to that vehicle. Now, I would suggest that if you stand in any major road in Green Up West End or any, any road throughout the town, you will get vehicles travelling at 40 mile an hour. I don't think that sample size is big enough to justify the scoring matrix being made up from that. I hope I've explained that well enough. Fox Street to Golf Place scored 28.8 on your scoring matrix. And I understand that the next highest score below the 40 points was 38.4. So 28.8 is well below the 38.4 scoring matrix, which in my view makes this stretch of road outside my home as just not necessary for traffic calming measures on your own scores. There is an exceptionally low rate of accidents on this street, and I appreciate what's been said. I must apologize, I'm struggling a wee bit on the scoring matrix to see the accidents that Mr Leach refers to. I, that's something I'm probably missing more than anything else. I have commented in the past as well, that there is no, there is no major danger presented in this street. It's a wide, wide street, it's a street frequently used by emergency services. It's, there is no, there is no danger. This, this whole, this whole thing has been driven by a, I believe, by a nuisance of noise. Cars do accelerate up this street, there is absolutely no doubt, and it would be a liar to say, and say that that does not happen. But again, I refer back to your own scoring matrix, and between Madeira Street and the Lyle Hill Park, by your own figures, it does not warrant the traffic calming measures being put in. I appreciate that there probably has to be a run-up towards the Lyle Hill and a runoff on the other side. But I would ask that you reconsider this, and if you want to calm traffic, people, local people seem very concerned about the annex, they seem very concerned about the school. You've got to see that where there's a high congregation of children, surely you should move the traffic calming measures to there. One of the other things, I'm personally, and that I am personally invested in, I believe if you put speed bumps outside my home, and I've been accused today on social media of nimbyism, and it perhaps is, I think this will create a disturbance, as cars accelerate and de-accelerate and move over the speed bumps during the day and especially at night. And I think, I genuinely, honestly believe that this is an unwarranted set of works, and your expenditure would be better placed elsewhere in the town. And really to round up, I would, if you look at your own matrix here, it doesn't warrant the speed, the measures being placed on this section of the street, certainly not down, as low down as Madeira Street. It's totally unwarranted. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Ken, thanks very much. Graham, can I, can I ask you to come in now as well, please?
Hello, thanks for letting me speak. Further to my letter of objections, I've got out cars that are getting around South Streets. Two streets have four lanes, two up and two down. The cars park outside their houses in the inside lane, so the moving traffic is in the outside lane. So this built-out pavement is blocking the inside lane, and will not have any effect on the cars moving up Newton Street. I don't find the build-outs improve visibility personally in other places where they've been fitted, because I feel if you use them, you've got to stick your nose out into the live traffic lane, which isn't good. There is no problem, as far as I can see, with Exton, Madeira Street or South Street, the visibility is perfect. And providing a crossing point at South Street, the majority, that's one of the reasons for it, the majority of people walk on the other side of the street, and the only people walking on this side of the street are dog walkers, going round the block, and they don't cross South Street. I say, my drive is quite narrow, and I have to drive across the road at right angles to the pavement so I can reverse straight up. This will be much more difficult if there's a built-out pavement there, because that's part of the road I can't use. The speed cushions, again, inconvenience in the parking lanes, could they not all be shut together so that they're not in the parking lane? Because nobody can drive in an apartment because of parked cars anyway. And I think, I also think it's up to the police, with the road policing unit we're supposed to have here, or local officers, to enforce the 30 mile an hour limit, not, council shouldn't be spending money doing this. And also, as you mentioned, Safety Cameras Scotland are going to put a mobile, mobile camera in Newton Street, and will that not help to slow things down? The campaigners for this were complaining about the speed at the school. Well, from the first speed cushion, it's about 290 metres to the park and 650 metres to the school. So I don't see how this traffic calming in Newton Street will slow down the traffic to the school or the park, as it will have speeded up by the time it gets there, if it wants to. I've been here since 1995, I only know of one accident on the 21st of June 2010, but I'll take your word, you must have better figure, you'll have figures, I've only got memory, so there was three. The scoring on the sheet, it says Newton Street between Fox Street and Golf Place has one nursery and one playpark. I don't know of any of these, as the playpark is between Fox Street and Forsyth Street. Lyle Road scores 40.3 and Newton Street 28.8. I would think it would be better, and as one's higher than Newton Street, I think you'd be better concentrating on those, maybe perhaps Finnick Street, which has a lot of speeding and numerous RTCs. And also, don't see why in these times the council should be spending over £70,000 on this scheme. That's all I've got to say, thank you.
Okay, Graham, thanks very much for that. So I'll invite Gordon to come back in and maybe address some, some of these points. And then I'll, I'll ask maybe Ken and Graham to come in with some kind of closing points before opening up to questions from, from the councillors. So Gordon, do you want to address Ken's points and Graham's points, please?
Yeah, no, so Ken's points, first of all, the first one you mentioned was the speeding. That figure that's on that sheet is actually the 85th percentile speed, right? Now, that, that is the speed that 85% of the vehicles are travelling at, not one vehicle. 85% of the vehicles are travelling at that speed, right? So that's, so that's 40.3 up Lyle Road. On, on, on the section, on the section between, between Golf Place and Madeira Street, the speed of vehicles in that section is 36.9. Right, so there, there is a speeding issue on that section as well. If I go down to the next section, and hold on to the second till I get the roads, that's between, between Fox, between Fox and Campbell Street, the speed reduces away down to 30.3. So that's 85% of the vehicles are almost driving at the speed limit down there, which is why, which is why the measures do not go the whole way down the road. That's why, that's why they have to stop. So you can see, there is a, there is an issue with the speeding vehicles on, on the section, on the section of Newton Street that we're looking at. The, the speed, the speed bumps, I'm trying to remember the question about the speed bumps now. The speed bumps, I think there was a question about speed bumps in parking bays. I think the speed bumps, the speed bumps have to go the whole way, whole way across the road in case, in case there's no parked cars on the, on the side of the road. So that's why we have to put the speed bumps right the way across, because if there's no parked cars there, then people will avoid the speed bumps by just driving up where the parking spaces are to be. The build-outs, the build-outs at the corner are, are to help you nose out, is to stop you nosing out. If the build-outs aren't there, and there's a car parked there, you need to nose out to see it. So these build-outs, the highway code says that you're not meant to park within 10 metres of a junction. So that's why the build-outs are there, round the junction, to prevent cars parking there so that you have the visibility, so you don't need to edge out. And finally, the, the police camera unit is a, is a mobile unit, and it's only, and it's only there part of the time, so it will not be there all the time. It will only be there every so often. There's a, there's a mobile unit in Latfield Road as well at the moment, and every time I've driven down Latfield Road, I don't think I've ever seen the mobile unit there. I know that it maybe is there, but it's not there very often. So the mobile unit will only affect the speed of the traffic when it's there. And finally, the, the noise one, it's not, the speed bumps aren't into it to, to reduce noise. The complaints aren't noise, the complaints are speed. The cushions are spaced at a certain distance apart so that it keeps the cars at constant speeds, so that they're not accelerating and decelerating. And because the constant speeds are lower, the noise should be lower.
Okay, okay Gordon, thanks, thanks for that. So Ken, would you, would you want to come back in, just to kind of sum up, if you don't mind? And then we'll bring Graham in. So Ken, if you want to start off, if you don't mind, please.
Thanks very much, Gordon, that explains the 85th percentile thing, which I freely admit I was confused about, and I do admit to that. However, I still must go back to, you know, your total scoring ranges here, and I would ask the councillors to consider this, and be your own, be your own figures here. You know, between Fox Street and Golf Place, 28.8, it isn't, your own figures dictate this. It is not a high-risk area, it's not a high-risk area. So there certainly must be, as I say, on the, further down in the page, you say that the next highest score was 38.4. I know when I'm rehashing something, but I want to make my point here, and we're at 28.8. There is other areas of the town that you need to invest the money in between 28.8 and 38.4. There's just simply no need for these measures here. The Lyle Hill, that's a different case in point. In my day, it was a 60 mile an hour, you know, speed there. But I genuinely would ask you to look at your own figures here. It's not warranted, and it's not warranted to be your own, be these, be your detail. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much, Ken. Graham, would you like to sum up, please, before opening up to councillors?
I just, yeah, I don't dispute the Lyle Road is, are a lot faster up there. Down the houses, they are slower. I think this mobile speed camera could affect things. And I know the roadsman keeps saying about, to give you better visibility. I feel if you sit back where the giveway line used to be, and you look at the pavement, you get better visibility of the cars coming up and down without having to put in this built-out corners. And that's all, thanks.
Okay, Graham, thanks very much. Okay, I'm going to open up now to the councillors to ask questions of the roads officials and Ken and Graham. So would anyone like to start us off, Jim, Jim McElhenney?
Thanks, Convene. It's probably a couple of questions for Gordon, picking up on something that Ken says earlier, that the data that he had seen that only reflected one accident. So can you just give us a wee, a couple of paragraphs as to how we've got the four and three, and that, or Ken didn't think that's kind of captured in the table? Second question was regarding the speeding. Does the speeding data reflect speeding in both directions? Is it predominantly in one direction only, for example, Lyle down to Newton, or Newton up to Lyle?
Okay, Gordon.
Councillor, Councillor McElhenney, first of all, first of all, the, the accident data, that comes from Police Scotland. So we get that data from Police Scotland. And I normally, I normally get it the other way around. It's normally people telling me there's been more accidents than there has been. So these accidents that are recorded are injury accidents, and that's very record, they don't record non-injury accidents. So these are all injury accidents. And, sorry, what was your second question again, sorry?
It was regarding the speeding data, is it capturing both directions? Or can it say it's more predominantly one directional? Or does it's not enough to work that out?
No, it's an average, it's an average of both of them, it's an average of both up and, and down. So it's an average, it's an average of both of them.
Okay, Gordon, thank you, thanks Jim. Any other councillors want to come in with any questions? Chris, Chris Curley?
Thank you Chair. So I've got a couple of questions. First of all, just creating 85th percentile speed, so that's the speed 50% of the vehicles actually exceed. So effectively, one in six of the vehicles are going above 40 miles per hour on Lyle Road and 36 are thereabouts on Newton Street. If you just confirm that for me, to officers. Is in relation to picking up Is in relation to picking up another point, what, I can't remember if it was, which one of the, of the objectives it was. But the, there was a point made about the, person not actually being within the exact area of these roads. Would you be able to give a comment on that with respect to whether or not the, it's appropriate to take account of, of pedestrian generators? Which are slightly out with the roads that are, that have been, that are in question here?
Thanks Chris. Gordon?
Yeah councillor Ma- Ma- sorry councillor Curley. The 85th percentile, so that's, that's 85% of the vehicles are travelling at that speed. So basically, it basically chops off the, the 15% that's low and the 15% that's high. It's what, it's what it does. So 85% of the vehicles are travelling at that, at that, at that speed. Now, if I was to do the average speed, the average speed would be even higher than that. Because it would, it would include these other ones. That's, that's, that, that's why, that's why we, we reduce it slightly. The pedestrian generators, as I said, as I said at the start, it's a school route as well. This is, this is the dedicated school route. And there is a, there is a park just one block down the, down the road from this. So that's, that's the reason, that's the reason that those, those, those were added on to the scoring sheet.
Okay Gordon, thank you. John, John Crowder?
Thank you, Convena. I'm just looking at the build outs, which seems to be part of the argument as well. And rather than build outs, we know that cars are not supposed to park within 30 feet of the junctions. And instead of the build outs, with double yellow lines and chevrons, would that have the same effect? Has any study been taken on the, the benefit of the build out versus double yellow lines and chevrons?
Gordon?
I personally find as if the, the double yellow lines and the chevrons don't work. Remembering, remembering that the, the enforcement officers aren't there all the time. And if, if the person parking on it knows that they're not there all the time, they'll just park on them anyway. The, the white, the white markings definitely do not work in any area in Inverclyde. It doesn't, it doesn't matter where it is. People still park on the, on, on the hatch and, and they still park on double yellows. I see them parking double yellows all over the place at the moment. So no, they don't, they don't work, which is why we've had to put physical measures in to physically stop the cars parking on them.
Okay Gordon, that's fine, thank you.
Thanks Gordon. Stephen, Stephen McCabe?
Thanks, Convena. The objectors have, have obviously highlighted the fact that in terms of the scoring matrix. Lyle Road is priority number one, but Newton Street is priority number 17. And I think it would be useful for officers to, to remind the committee. Why we're sitting here today considering a sort of combined scheme. Rather than the sort of previous proposals or a, a separate scheme for, for Lyle Road.
Chris, Gordon?
Thank you councillor McCabe. Yes, this, this was, this was discussed at the last committee, committee on the, on the 16th of April. Now, unfortunately, I wasn't present at that one. So I can't tell you, I can't tell you all the twos and threes that went, that went on during it. But there, there was, there was objections that the scheme didn't go far enough. It didn't go around the corner and the, the committee took the decision to, to, to. Extend the scheme down to Madeira Street and instructed the roads department to, to lengthen the scre- the, the scheme and take it down there. And I think at, at the time they were told that this would jump over some of the priorities and other of the areas, but that was the decision that was taken.
Okay, ju- just, just to follow that up, Convena, I suppose that, that, the, the challenge to the, the roads officers. Given, given they were obviously given that direction by, by, by the committee. But we are free as a committee to, and I think it was a majority view anyway. But I, I think we're free as a, free as a committee to review any previous decision we've taken. But just from a professional, professional perspective. What are, what are the officers' view in terms of, does the combined scheme make sense basically?
Gordon?
I, I think yes, the scheme, the scheme does make sense. And as I've said, the, the speeds are high in that section and then they drop off significantly to, to, to the next section. I suppose where probably we don't sit comfortable is that it, it is jumping over some other areas. And that, and that's, that, that probably causes a bit, a bit of a problem. We've got a policy in there, we had a policy in there. But on the, on, on the, on the other hand, the, the speeds are high in this section, in this section of roads.
Okay, thank you. Okay Gordon, thanks. Okay, did anyone else want to come in?
Yeah, could I come in please?
Yeah, is that in this, yeah, sorry, in this, in this, Nelson.
Yeah, I, I was wanting to ask some questions regarding. See a comparison between Newton Street and Eldon Street as far as accidents and speeds are com- compared. You know, wh- why would we do this in Newton Street and not in Eldon Street? And then I would also like to ask about these bumps as far as danger to cyclists and motorcyclists. Especially, you know, when, when there's snow about and things, if, if, if they hit one of these, it could be very dangerous. Also problems with snow clearing as far as the bumps are concerned, what, what happens with, with snow clearing? Because it's, I've seen the mess on Branson Road, you know, when they're trying to clear snow and the, because the, the snow, the bumps are there. So I can imagine the same thing happening on this, what I would consider through Inverclyde. Also, they're saying about, Gordon was saying there'd be no increase in noise. But I think with larger vehicles and, and larger vehicles do, I think this is a bus route in fact. Larger vehicles would use this and they would accelerate and de-accelerate with air brakes, which, which do make quite a lot of noise. And I think at night that, that could, you know, cause problems for people. And also the aesthetics, within a conservation area putting these speed bumps there, I, I really don't think they would look good into what is. Like a kind of wide boulevard road. So I have concerns about that as well. So I wonder if, if the likes of Gordon could come back and answer some of these.
Okay Gordon.
Councillor, councillor Nelson, first of all, the, the, the speed bumps and cyclists and motorcycles. There is, there is plenty of gaps in between the bumps. The, the cyclist can negotiate between them. So there, there's not, there's not a problem there. That's why we haven't put tables in so that, so that the, the, the cyclist can get past them. We've also, we also haven't put tables in so that your larger vehicles like what you're saying, they straddle these. So, so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't really affect them. That, that's why we use these on bus routes. And we don't put tables on, tables right across the road. So that, so that the, the larger vehicles can straddle them. And as I said before, there's been a, there's been a study done on the, on the, on the bumps. And it's come back and said that it doesn't increase the noise. We put them in, in Lallybank about a year ago and, and some of the complaints were it's going to be noisy. And we've not had anybody say anything since they've been installed. And that, and that's a bus route as well. As for snow clearing, yes, it will be, it will be slightly more awkward with the bumps there. But we just need to deal with that and, and get on with it. The, the question is here is to try and reduce the speed of traffic. As I said at the start, remembering it is, is a dedicated route to a school. And we don't want cars flying down there at over 40 miles an hour when they should only be doing 30.
Thanks Gordon.
So you haven't, you haven't, you haven't, you haven't answered my question about how does this compare with accidents and speeds on Eldon Street?
Off, off the top of my head councillor Nelson, I can't answer that. I can't answer that question. I would need to, I would need to go away and look at, look at Eldon Street.
Okay, okay.
And you've, you've also mentioned cost wise, do, do you think this money could be spent better in, in, in other areas? Like what I would say more residential areas, you know, where there's a lot of children playing and things like that?
I only, I only think the area that could be better spent on areas in the priority list. So whatever's, whatever's number two, three, four, five, six, so on, is the areas that we should be, we should be spending it on. And, and that's all I can say.
Okay Gordon. Drew, Drew Mackenzie, do you want to come in?
Thanks, Convena. Yeah, my recollection of this is the problem was initially on the Lyle Hill. With vehicles speeding down the Lyle Hill and what we could do to curtail that, particularly at the bend at the bottom. And now it seems to have moved down the street and it's traffic, traffic calming there. And I don't think this will remedy the, the racers flying over the top of the Lyle Hill and getting down the road. Possibly, you know, at the last Regent Committee meeting, councillor Curley put forward a, a motion about 20 mile an hour speed limits within Inverclyde. And the kind of general feeling there was that, yeah, there was a, certainly a need for this in certain areas. Now, this particular area would probably be ideal for such a thing and save all the, the calmings and the, the, the build outs and all the rest of it. Simply by installing a 20 mile an hour zone from the, right across the top of the Greave Road, right down over the Lyle Hill. And perhaps extending it a bit to Newton Street and would save all this. I don't think there's a problem in Newton Street as far as speeding goes anywhere else in, in the West End. And I think that would be a sensible solution. The, the traffic calms, they're unsightly, these things that are put in the road. And I, I don't really see it, the, the build outs, have they been successful where they've been? Once again, I don't really appreciate it. And it's a lot of money if it's there. And as the two, as the two people who have spoken, the two residents have spoken, they kind of. It's in their interest to make it as safe as possible and where they don't seem to think that there's a need for it there. And I tend to agree with them.
Okay, Stephen, Stephen, do you want to come in? Stephen McCabe?
Yeah, I, I tend to be a wee bit of a stickler for procedures to be perfectly honest, Convena. And I think councillor, councillor Mackenzie's contribution there falls in the category of, of basically opinion. That should be aired in any debate that we have, rather than this point we're asking questions. And I have to say, I think councillor Nelson's, while he did frame it, frame him in the form of questions. I think that was opinions worth getting stated there as well. So I think we just need to be careful. At this stage, we're, we're here to ask opinions to inform our decision. And any sort of comments or any views should be expressed when we get to the debate part of the meeting.
Okay, okay. Thanks for that Stephen. John Crowder, do you want to come back in?
If I could, Convena.
Yeah?
Second actually now. It's just to go back to the location of the accidents. And if we could have any information on that and what was the cause of those accidents? Was that recorded? Was it due to speeding? Was it due to the road conditions? Or the other part, do we have any figures at all which would indicate the number of accidents where there was no injuries?
Gordon, do you have that information?
Unfortunately, to hand, no, I don't, I can't give you, I can't give you all that information. And I, I definitely can't give you any information in accidents that aren't, aren't, I haven't got any injuries. We only get, we only record accidents that, that, that Police Scotland give us. And as I said before, they are, they are, they are, they are injury accidents.
Okay, okay Gordon, thanks. Okay, does any, anyone else want to come in? Okay Ken, I'll let you come back in.
Thanks very much. Can I, can I just ask you Gordon, can I just clarify something? You say accidents on Newton Street, is that defined within the area of this proposal?
Gordon?
Yes, yes, sorry, it is, it is in between that proposal, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, away. All had to say, yeah. Okay, we're going to adjourn in the Ken and Graham. Normally at this point in the proceedings, you'd be asked to kind of leave the room. So maybe Rona can, can organise things.
Diane, with everybody that's not in the committee or legal to the lobby just now.
Okay, Rona?
That's separate. Do you move to the lobby, yes?
Okay, so because we're going into private session, we'll just pause the recording now. Start with the recording paused at 3.45. This, this recording resumed at 4.12. We've got a call in user six now.
Could I ask who is calling then by telephone? Call in user six?
I have a mobile number for councillor Jackson.
Hello, hi, this is councillor Jackson. That's me called back in again.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, okay. Listen, thanks very much for the joinings again, Ken and Graham. We're going to now move to, to a vote. Peter, do you want to talk us through what's, what's going to take place?
So Convena, I, I understand you wished to put forward a motion that recommendations per 3.4.1. That the, the objections are dismissed and the proposal is, as detailed in appendix three is. It is remitted to the head of roads and head of legal to arrange for implementation.
Yes.
And councillor Nelson, I understand that your amendment was that you were to uphold the objections in whole and in part. And remit it to officers firstly to consider the proposals originally put to this committee in August 2019. And also to factor in the priorities scale that, that we apply. To, to deal with any, any other sites that are of a higher priority than that site on its own.
That's correct.
Got that.
Just think for clarity, Convena, it's, it's April 2019, not August 2019.
Apologies Peter, yes, that's correct. April 2019. So. Okay. No, he didn't roll anyway, so, so it just be fair. Okay, that's fine. You got marked up one. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have, we have the, the chair's motion and councillor Nelson's amendment. Councillor Cochrati, first of all, can I ask if you are for the, the motion or for the amendment?
For the motion.
Okay councillor Crowder, can I ask if you are for the motion or the amendment?
For the motion.
Councillor Curley, can I ask if you are for the motion or the amendment?
For the motion.
Councillor Jackson, can I ask if you are for the motion or the amendment?
For the motion.
Councillor McCabe, can I ask if you are for the motion or the amendment?
Motion.
Councillor McCormick, can I ask if you are for your motion or the amendment?
Motion.
Councillor McElhenney, can I ask if you are for the motion or the amendment?
Motion.
Councillor Mackenzie, can I ask if you are for the motion or the amendment?
For the motion.
And councillor Nelson, can I ask if you are for the motion or your amendment?
Amendment.
Okay, so that is. That's eight for the motion to one for the amendment. So that is the, the motion carried and it's remitted to officers to do with implementation.
Okay, thanks very much everyone for attending. Special Ken and Graham for the contributions. Thanks very much.